Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
We'll explain why in a moment, but I'll accept a motion to reconvene.
So moved.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? For those tuning in, we had a work session that began out on a separate topic involving the Riverwalk, recessed for a few minutes to get back here, and that is why we are back here now, to have a separate work session dealing with our water ordinances. So with that, let me move this over to the city manager.
Thank you, your honor. The council recalls, back in April of 2006, the city council conducted a work session on the city's water rate, and the study was conducted by Weston and Sampson in conjunction with the firm of Woodcock Associates. At that time, we indicated to the city council that we'd like to come back in the fall to talk about a process of implementing an ordinance that would deal with many of the recommendations that came from the study. And the whole premise of coming back in the fall is to get the process started for the ordinance so that when you have your budget process, and when we start in January, that we have the ability to build that into the water rate that we'll be presenting to you during the FY08 budget presentation. This time, what I'd like to do is I'd like to have Dave Allen, the deputy public works director, come forward and speak to you about some of the issues that we see within a proposed water, excuse me, water ordinance. We pretty much put this in the format of questions and answers so that we can, once we finish here tonight, we also will put this on the website so that people can, you know, look through and understand why there is an ordinance that's being proposed for the water rate. So, Dave?
Thank you, John. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. As John had mentioned, it was April that we brought the rate study to you, and among other things, it recommended going to an ordinance, and we do have a water tariff now, which is very similar to what we have in this ordinance, although we have improved on it. And Suzanne Woodland is going to talk a little bit about those technical differences from a legal point in a little bit, and I'm going to talk about some of the more engineering and water utility use type of ordinances or issues that we're going to be dealing with in this ordinance. First of all, again, this is very similar, if you were to go page by page, very similar to our existing tariff in format as far as, you know, it defines the utility, it defines our responsibilities, and a lot of the work that we do. It's what we're also going to be doing in this, this is going to be, it's referred to as Chapter 16, and currently, we have a sewer ordinance that's woven into Chapter 12. We're going to make that Chapter 16, all of our utilities, so it will also have a section on the water, the sewer, and then eventually, we'll be coming to you with the stormwater utility. So those, all those utility issues will be covered under that one chapter. Again, the purpose of the water and sewer rate study, and I think this is important because this is really, provides the framework under which we made changes to the water tariff, was that we were going to review and update the rate structure. That obviously is something that we did, and you will be seeing that on a yearly basis in the fees. But a couple of the important points was to assure sustainability in water resources and water sewer systems. And so what we did is, some of the fine tuning we did was take some of the sustainable practices that are out there and incorporate those into our ordinance in conjunction with kind of the direction of the master plan and really the direction that we've received from the city council. A couple of other points that we tried to address in this was to assure equitable sharing of water and sewer costs, you know, that meaning that you pay for what you use, and also assure the capability to pay for the needed improvements in operations. Obviously, when they went through and did that rate study, we looked at our capital plans, we looked at our operating costs, and we make sure our rates and all of our associated fees are covering the costs of those items. So essentially, what we started with when we looked at that rate, water sewer rate study, is we looked at the future growth, obviously, an important aspect of planning for our utilities for the future. We looked at technological changes, you know, we use the SCADA system now, we have automated billings, we have a lot of the things that we're seeing in the, in both the water and wastewater industry. So we had to address those, our staffing needs, and our capital projects. All of those went into making that rate, that rate study. And then the last one, which is what we're focusing on tonight, the regulations. Obviously, there are regulations from a, that are driven by the United States and by the state that we have to address, but they're also our regulations that we need to make sure that they're addressing what we need to have them address. So in those regulations, that addresses, this ordinance will be addressing some of those changes. So out of that study, it called for a couple of things, and again, I'm going back over this because I think it's important, as you look at our ordinance, as to what the, some of the reasons we made some changes. The new rate structure, we're talking about a two-step rate structure, increasing block rate. What that means is, certain users will, within, under a certain amount, will get billed one thing. Those users that exceed that amount will be billed at a higher rate. This is a proven conservation type of rate structure, and our ordinance will allow us to do that. Ultimately, all of, anytime I'm talking about money, one of the important features of the ordinance rather than our tariff is we actually had some financial items in that tariff. What we're doing in the ordinance is we're pulling all of that out, and that will be all part of the fee structure. So each year, as you're going through the budget process, you'll be voting on those The next thing we have is the new water connection fee, and where this is important is, we're talking about the development issues, the growth issues, and what we've come up with is a new connection fee that acts to, to put up the burden of the additional capital-type improvements that we have to make to our system on the developer or the user that is creating that demand. So what we have is a new connection fee that really looks at, at what the impact of a user is on our system, and assesses that fee as part of their new connection. It also mentioned maintaining reserves at about 25 percent, and then, of course, this recommendation was to adopt an ordinance to replace the water tariff. And what I'm going to do is, I'm going to turn this over to Suzanne. She'll talk a little bit about the technical issues associated with the tariff and ordinance from a legal perspective.
Suzanne Woodland, Assistant City Attorney. Good evening. There's the pen. Currently, we're regulated by what's known as a water tariff. A tariff is basically a holdover from those days when we were regulated by the Public Utilities Commission. We are no longer regulated by the Public Utilities Commission, and primarily, that's because we charge customers both inside and outside of the limits of the city of Portsmouth on an equal basis. So that everyone is charged the same across the board. And so that basically takes us outside of the PUC regulation. So that's why a tariff is really not the best method for going forward. A tariff, like our water ordinance, will define the relationship between the user, the customer, and the supplier, namely, the city of Portsmouth Water Division. The tariff covers the connection, service, and maintenance issues. The new ordinance will do the same. The tariff right now does, as Dave Allen explained, somewhat limit us in our ability to adjust the rates annually and to adjust certain fees annually. So part of the advantage of moving to this ordinance form is that we are going to give you more control over the rates and the fees. So what is the advantage of an ordinance? First, it is updating our regulatory document to current law. It should be an ordinance, and that's why you have that before you. It will give us some better enforcement tools. We've beefed up some of the penalty provisions, really tried to spell out prohibited uses, tried to deal with some waste issues. In addition, as Dave Allen mentioned, we have incorporated some of our sustainability and conservation goals, for example, sections related to irrigation systems. In addition, the ordinance centralizes the water regulations under one ordinance. Right now, we have a separate section in our ordinance that deals with backflow preventers, which really is a device that keeps water that is not drinkable from getting into our system. We have this just floating around in a separate part of our ordinance. It's, that section is actually going to be coming out and moving into this new water ordinance. So if you look at the draft, you'll see there's a whole section on backflow prevention devices. We think that this ordinance will be easier to administer, in part because all of the water aspects will be in one section. This will hopefully help with better public awareness, having it as an ordinance rather than a tariff. You know, it always helps to educate your customer. We are trying to spell out pretty clearly who has responsibility for what, in terms of maintenance, thawing, the costs related to extensions of main water pipes. So we've really tried to break things out in a very clear and organized fashion, so everyone knows going in. Here's your cost, here's our cost. And again, as we mentioned, all fees and rates will become part of the annual budget process.
So, impact on the budget process. What you're going to see most clearly about this, and this is the third time you've heard this, but it is important because we are going to have those rates, those fees that are actually out of, out of touch with the reality of some of our costs. We're going to have those in the fee. So, for example, fire protection rates, some of those private hydrants and things like that, those rates are 1988 versions, and so we'll be able to update those on a regular basis. And you will see those, the fee committee will see those, and we'll be able to keep everything associated with the cost of running the water system updated on a regular basis. One of the big issues that we've, we've all heard talk about and tried to address is, how does this ordinance deal with growth? And so what we looked at here is the recommendation of the consultant was a way to develop this connection fee. And the bottom line, the philosophy is, growth pays for growth. So growth in the city will pay for growth in our system. New users will continue to pay for site-specific improvements, and what that means is, if somebody's coming in with a site plan, going through TAC, the Technical Advisory Committee, going through Planning Board, there may be an old set of, an old piece of pipe out in front of their property that needs to get upgraded or replaced. Those types of changes on a, on a technical end will be handled through the Planning Board process. But in addition, we're going to have a capacity use surcharge, and that's a specific, it's defined in the ordinance, and that capacity use surcharge will come in the form of a connection And this will be a one-time fee for any new development, and the fees assessed will be proportional to the, the impact of the proposed development. And it's a fee-based formula that will be, is again, defined in our, in this ordinance, and the intent is to pay for the capital projects related to that growth. What's important here is, as we went through this, and as we were going from tariff to an ordinance, and we were doing the exploratory work, the legal department, Public Works, went up to the PUC to talk to them and make sure that any changes that we made were, you know, within our legal bounds, make sure that we weren't, weren't creating something that would put the city at jeopardy. And so one of the very sensitive issues, of course, is paying for improvements to the system, and it was very important, both our consultant in their report and talking to the PUC, was to make sure that we had a legally defensible methodology in going forward with assessing this connection fee. So what we came up with was a, at their recommendation, they actually gave us several recommendations, but the one that seemed to work best to fit our system was what's referred to as a capacity use surcharge. And what we do is, we would take the projected average daily flow of a development, and we develop a multiplier that would be used to generate the funds for our capital project. And that multiplier is, is something that, that we will develop, and again, to make this legally defensible, we have to take a look at our, our capital plan, we have to take a look at our operating costs, and it's something that, you know, this isn't a number that comes, you come to on the back of a napkin, this is something that we'll, we'll probably have a consultant work with us to come up with that number, and it would be something that would, would be a fee in the fee schedule. And then we take that multiplier, and we take the flow that's coming from a proposed development, and we divide it by what we would consider the average flow for an individual home. And the state has numbers that you would use for that, so it's, it's the average daily flow of the developer divided by an equivalent dwelling unit. So you would just say, each average house would, would use 250 gallons of water, for example. And then you would use this multiplier for each unit of, of flow that a, that a developer was proposing, you would use this multiplier, and that would be the connection fee, which that money is then earmarked for capital improvements to our system. And it's, it's an accounting thing. We've, we've worked very closely with the accounting department and the legal department to make sure that this is something that is both legal and also something that we can implement smoothly. And ultimately, that multiplier, which again, is that number that's based on our capital plan and, and our utility costs, will be looked at on a routine basis. So that's, that's really that fee that we'll be charging to development to help fund future growth in our system. And that's, that's probably the most significant change that we have in this ordinance over our current tariff. Will our regular customers see much of a change in this? Probably not. Having the tiered rate schedule will, and of course, that still has to be, you know, that's at your discretion as part of the fees, but it would probably favor the smaller user. They would see, they would not see an increase. Who will see a potential increase would be the large volume users. We've also gotten, we got rid of the, are proposing to get rid of the minimum water fee that everyone is charged. So people would pay a flat fee, no matter how much water they use, and then would get billed on top of that. So there are potentially, you know, the single homeowner, a single person in a, in a regular house could actually use less water than that, that fee is covering. So we're getting rid of that. So certainly, again, the low-end water user will probably benefit the most from these It also permits, one of the other changes is, we bill every four months, which is something that has, you know, that's the way it's always been here, is probably, you know, people look at their bill and they'll multiply it by four, thinking that's their annual bill. But we'll probably go to more frequent billing. Certainly, our large volume users, we bill monthly, but the regular customers, we're billing every four months, that'll probably go to every three months, so it'll be quarterly billing. And I think that'll make it a little more palatable than the larger, larger bills you see with four months. And then some customers will be affected by the conservation and sustainability provisions, such as those related to the irrigation systems. Along with, along with the changes to this ordinance, we're also updating our, what's referred to in there, you'll see a Portsmouth Water Division Utility Specifications. This is something that we're, we've been, we've used for years under a different title, but we're updating those. A couple of the practices, for example, in doing some, Tom Cravens has been, been doing some research on the irrigation systems, and our typical site review ordinance or our, or these utility specifications had always called for, if you're putting in an irrigation system, you have to put down four inches of loam to grow your grass on. What we're finding out now is that if you specify six inches of loam, a little more area for the grass to grow, and the weeds grow a little deeper, you don't have to irrigate as much. So as we change these types of specifications, you know, we're working towards that sustainable goal, and these are just kind of small technical details that we're able to adjust as we go forward with these changes. And lastly, the, you know, the, some of the other changes we had, there were references in the tariff to, or references to the, in the ordinances to a number of state laws that, that list specific sections and chapters that are no longer applicable. So what we've done is, we've changed some of those references to say, the applicable state law, those types of things, because they've changed a couple of times since that was originally written. So it's, it's kind of a housekeeping type of thing, but it, it just keeps, makes sure that our ordinance is, is up to speed with the state laws. And those are, those are really the main points. So where we're going from here is, obviously, we have this work session, open to any questions after this, looking for a first reading in October, the second reading in November, and third reading in December. And the intent of this is to have this done by the end of the year, so that as we go forward into the budget session for next year, these changes will be made, and we can actually make the appropriate changes in the budget.
Again, your honor, this is, would keep us on, excuse me, could you go back to the schedule? This would keep us on a path to be able to implement this for our budget prep, like FY08. It could probably slip one meeting if we had to, but that's why we're, you know, and we wanted to have the first reading on the 16th. And what we will do is, we'll provide, we'll put this up on the website, we'll provide information. We'll have a similar type of presentation at the November 13th meeting, which will be a public hearing, probably a reduced version, 10-minute version, but try to hit all the highlights, and that's why we put it in a question-answer type of format, so that we can advise the public. But as Dave said, probably, you know, all our retail customers would probably see limited differences. The idea of what we're trying to do here, probably a couple of important points to reiterate, is, one, the sustainable practices, to, to have those that use the water pay for it. And secondly, I think we're addressing something that Councilor Whitehouse had brought up. We're trying to address the issue of readiness to serve, and we're doing that in accordance with a defensible formula. We want to be consistent, and, Councilor, you'd probably be happy to know that, that if we do follow this schedule, I suspect that the Weston would come under this because it would, it would basically be part of their building permit, when they came in to get their building permit, would go through the, the whole land use review, and part of that would be this, this calculation. So I think this really, I think, addresses those concerns that came up. So by and large, this is what you're going to see for, in your ordinance, and again, we stand ready to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Counselor Dwyer.
Well, one of the, I remember a couple of the recommendations from the April session that we had. One, John, I think you could just address that the connection fee might be something that could be implemented immediately.
Absolutely.
But then the second was, differential rates for communities that we, that are not Portsmouth. Is that also envisioned in this, Dave?
We did, we did take a look at that, and we talked to the PUC about that, and what we found out was that we could do that, but it would only be for the new customers in those surrounding communities. So, you know, it really, up to 15 percent, we could, we could do that, but it really started to get awkward when, you know, just from a tracking point of view, if we had a new customer come online in Greenland, and he got charged 15 percent more because he came on, but we had to maintain the same fee in the surrounding community.
And Counselor, if I might, your honor, there was a major water user in Newington that we actually negotiated a larger connection fee, if you recall. I don't know, we, we received about, I think it's about $2 million from them.
From New England?
Yeah. And maybe you could talk a little bit about that?
Right, and that was, New England Energy, they were putting a power plant online, and we really, you know, in this case, we didn't have this ordinance, but what we did was, we looked at their impacts to, to the flows coming down into that area. In addition to, to doing some major upgrades to the piping system to get down there, we also had them put in a system that we were able to pilot, some, some wireless metering that we were able to expand out into that area. So instead of having to have our meter reader go out and read those, we're actually getting that information by telephone, and so it really put the pilot part in that.
So just, just to clarify, based on that, that, then I can understand that it wouldn't make sense from a regular rate charge, but that means then, that we wouldn't also, for new connections, charge a higher rate for other communities? It would be a negotiation?
That, when we're, one of the things that when, before this ordinance was put in place, with large users that were going to impact the system, we went in and talked to them, one would be probably out at the PES International Trade Port, Lonzo Biologics, that was one. They, they're the ones that provided us the funding to reactivate the Harrison well, if you recall that. But the other one is the energy company in Newington. I think we also had, well, it goes back to Redhook, had a major one as well. So those were on a case-by-case basis, but what we want to get to is a, in getting to what Councilor Whitehouse said, we want to get to something citywide, that if you have growth, let's say, in the downtown, we typically wouldn't think of that as typical to the energy plant, or Lonzo, or Redhook, but what we're going to do is, we'll have a calculation, and in some instances, depending on the size of the development, you may have no impact. So they would have no additional fee, but in the event, let's say, for example, the Weston, you'll, we'll do the calculation, and they may have that impact.
But if we were to have a new large user in a community outside of Portsmouth?
We would put a provision in the ordinance, and I would talk to the city attorney about this, that would allow us the opportunity to deal with extenuating circumstances, such as in, you know, who knows, you know, you never know that you're going to have somebody that's going to come in, that's going to need 25,000 gallons a day, maybe. I, I don't know, I'm just kind of throwing that out. What is, what is the energy, what is the energy plant use now?
They're, they're up around 30, 40,000 gallons a day.
Yeah, so, you know, we'll have to put a provision to deal with that, because it's extenuating circumstances.
We're actually trying to think ahead with some of those issues, so a couple of things. First, we are trying to make this uniform, so there is a methodology which will be followed, and it captures this new ordinance, both readiness to serve, so those site-specific improvements, you know, the, the pipes, as Dave explained, coming up, you know, in front of the property, those will be handled like they traditionally have been. Namely, you know, we know there's a big project coming in, we know there isn't enough capacity to serve, and they have some very specific things that they need to do if we have the supply of water. Then we have the connection fee, which will be looking at the projected flows, and the multiplier to deal with the long-term impacts. In addition, we were thinking ahead, again, because we are in several communities, and not just Portsmouth, where build-out is possible, we also looked at extensions of our main line. And so in the new ordinance, you'll actually find a section which deals with extensions of the main line. And there's a specific, you know, customers to be served would pay all costs, and it's at our discretion. So if we decide as a utility that it is not in the interest of the utility and the customers that, that we serve to extend, because there's just no way to really cover all the costs and all the implications, we don't, you know, we left ourselves that reservation to not fully extend our system, because of that, you know, just not knowing what might come down the road. So we did deal with the main pipe extension.
Looking at the main pipe extensions and that, that issue, it probably more specifically addresses policy considerations that we've had in the past with municipal services agreements and so forth with PES or Greenland. Is there any other regulatory body, or can we be compelled to do anything other than that which we decide, and to what extent can we? Is there a state taking? Is there, is there some other authority greater than even the city council of Portsmouth that, that can, that can compel us to do things with hookups to large entities that we would prefer not to hook up with or not?
I, we are not regulated by the Public Utilities Commission, and that actually gives us a little more leeway than, say, a number of communities which are regulated by the Public Utilities Commission.
Is it voluntarily that one submits to PUC regulation?
The, there are criteria that define what constitutes a public The, there are criteria that define what constitutes a public utility. Part of the reason we are not one is because our rates are flat across all of the jurisdictions that we serve. So right now, we are not under that jurisdiction, and therefore, some of the regulations and statutes relating to public utilities do not apply to us as they impact, you know, requirements, if you will, to, to serve all areas. Might someone, you know, as you know, might someone fight about it?
Anything can happen, I understand that.
Right, but certainly, we have a lot more flexibility, and that's why we have left that reservation of rights in there.
And so the rate structure that you put in place is presumably designed to preclude us from having to be regulated, so that we can make our own decisions and determine our own destiny?
Correct, that was part of our goal, to stay unregulated.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Your Honor. On the, with the time schedule in mind, and the fact that all of our customers are not Portsmouth, do we have to take this to other communities and do a roadshow, or should we? So that, since we no longer have to go by the Utilities Commission, do we have any obligations to go out to the other, the rest of the customers?
Let me just, I think, Counselor, there hasn't been, we haven't been regulated by the PUC for a number of ye, for how long, a long, long time? So we, the reason is, is because we treat those retail customers and those other communities the same as our retail customers within the confines of the city. We, 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 we treat all retail customers the same.
But is, do you think, at least for public relations, that we should be talking to the other communities to let them know how we're changing it?
Well, I'll let Dave, I think we have been talking.
And a follow-up to that is, is with that in mind, do you have an idea of what the other communities that we're servicing, what they have for new projects coming online, and where that might also be affected into this?
What we've done in the past is, both Peter, myself, and typically the chief plan operator have gone to, for example, Madbury, where obviously we're, you know, have a significant impact with our water treatment plant and the reservoir. And we've spoken with them, we go to their water board, for example, on an annual basis, and just kind of update where we are on projects and, and get their, you know, hear what they're thinking about and what they're talking about. It was probably five or six months ago, we went to the town of Greenland and just did the same thing. We let them know what, what projects are out there and listen to what, what they have to say. Obviously, there's infrastructure out there, and, and so we do that just on a periodic basis, and, you know, we, we can do that certainly. Again, I think the important thing that, about this whole thing is that there aren't significant changes to the existing tariff that, you know, the, the regular user sees. And, and certainly, if, if an out-of-town development were happening, obviously, it would be looked at very closely. In any event, what happens is out of this is we just have a regular formula, more of a consistent type of way of dealing with that.
Thank you. Counselor Penalovich.
Yeah, I might have misunderstood what Tom said, but in all due respect, we, if a company was to come into Greenland, and we have an agreement with them, correct?
Mm-hmm.
We could not refuse them the water rights, could we?
Well, depends on, I think that would be a question that would have to be answered, do we have the capacity to serve them? So that would be the key question. So, for example, if there was somebody that had, came in, and they were a very large water user, excuse me, then we would say, do we have the capacity? And we, if we didn't have the capacity, we could, one or two things could happen. One, you pay us X dollars, which happened with the energy company in Newington, to help us look for new sources. Or two, well, we can't service you now, but if we do find other capacity, we will service you in the future.
Okay, so even though we have that agreement with them?
Right. We don't have any responsibility to put our system in jeopardy for our existing customers. So, for example, the same thing happened with Lonza. We said to Lonza, look, we want you, we want you here, you're a great business, but you're going to have to work with us on reactivating the Harrison well, because you're a large water user, and they said, yes, we will do that, and they provided us about a million two or something like that.
Yeah, we had, and some was for the wastewater side, and then we had the water side.
And in addition to them, they, they actually, obviously, the water they use has to be treated on the way out as well, so we did it both ways. So that's a good question, it's just that we, you know, with a large user, we have the right to protect our interests of our existing customers.
But to clarify, if I understood your question, if we have the capacity, and it is deemed that it is not a threat to the integrity, in that case, would we be compelled in that scenario?
Ultimately, I think we would, but it also depends, I mean, it depends on the size of the, the requirement. I mean, we, we have done our, our due diligence with our master plan for the water usage through 2020. If we find that, you know, if there was a company, I know you might be, we're biting around the edges on this thing, but if it was a large user, we could basically make the case that it would affect us as, and affect our existing customers.
Counselor Dwyer.
Are the, are the, the thresholds for the tiers set in the ordinance, or is that something we set as part of the fee annually? What's the thinking there?
Likely, that, that will be defined in the fee structure. I think at this point, it was 800, was it 800? Yeah, 800 units per, per quarter?
And that will be defined within, and we will make that note, we will, we will make and bring that to attention like we do on all the fees.
So that would be, just to clarify, that would be something that would be adjusted through the fee processes compared to an ordinance change?
Correct.
Okay. All right, Counselor Whitehouse, and then Counselor Reynolds.
Thank you, Mayor. Our city manager often refers to my concern about, you know, the burden that its developers have got to put onto our water and our sewer system, you know? And I wish, in a sense, that this is a right move right here, but are we a little too late? You know, I mentioned way back in January of this year, doing something.
But, I mean, if I might, okay, I'm sorry.
Well, first of all, I want to get one thing clarified. We'd agreed to allow park development in Greenland to enter our system. Now, we're talking 22,000 gallons a day going into our sewer system.
Right.
Now, that's water. Now, even though we agreed, and they haven't broken ground, and there's no go-ahead out there in that project, how will this ordinance affect us?
Well, I'll, I'll turn over this, the Assistant City Attorney needs to come to the microphone, Suzanne, speak to that issue.
We anticipate that they will be subject to the water ordinance, and therefore, they will have to pay the connection fee, just like everyone else.
And, and we have negotiated a fee already with them, which will still be in place.
That, yes, that other fee is for the sewer side, and in fact, I gave them a heads-up today that the water ordinance is likely coming.
Getting back to my same question about future development that have already been through the land regulatory boards, and has got the process started, will we be able to also introduce this ordinance to them?
Which one are you talking, I mean, if they have a building permit, I believe, the key issue would be the building permit that was filed.
The final building permit.
The building permit that's filed.
All right.
Dave?
Yeah, the, the building permit doesn't get filed till after they've gone through site review now, so, and, and again, part of this is, like we said, there, there are improvements that would be picked up on through site review and through planning board approval, and then whether they may have to make any improvements or not based on their site, there will be this fee based on the amount of water that they are actually going to be using.
And I want to just, just make a point, because I think it's, it's a point worth making, that it's been 25 years since we've, we've, we've really looked at the whole system, and we wanted to do it right, and we want it to be defensible. We started in April, talking, putting this together, we hope to have this in place by December 4th, and so we'll address the issue, and hopefully, we'll capture those developments that need to be captured. To be honest with you, we captured, we did individual agreements with the larger users, though this did not fall through the cracks. I think credit should be given to the fact that we probably have generated in excess of $3.5 million for the water side in negotiated agreements. Now, I would prefer to see it codified and done in a way that we just do a formula and deal with it, it makes it a lot easier for everybody. But clearly, we didn't let anything fall through the cracks, and now I think if we move on this schedule, we'll be able to capture any other development that's going on.
Counselor Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the presentation, Dave, and, and I certainly applaud the incorporation of several of the, several principles related to sustainability into our new ordinance, such as the increasing block rate for users and, you know, capacity use surcharge. I, I recall mentioning this specifically at, at the earlier work session, wondering why we might not have more than a two-tier rate structure, why we wouldn't perhaps go to, you know, I don't know, three or five, in terms of, you know, the, taking the principle of those who use more should pay more.
Yeah, the, the, I think that could happen in the future. I mean, they, they actually put our model together, the rate model that, that we'll be using in the future was based on those after, I think they did some sensitivity analysis. I know Gail worked with them very closely in the finance department on that. And, you know, there's, there's a, a line between what gets you the bang for the buck and what gets more complicated, and, and you really don't get that. Now, certainly, because we have this now in the fee structure, if, if we need to go forward with that in the future, you know, as we progress and find out, yeah, we could, you know, we'd actually do better if we, if we increase the blocks, that can be done through that, that fee structure.
Right.
As we move forward. I mean, we have the rate model now, so we can run some different scenarios.
And, and the thing is, we're making the change, we want to be able to walk before we run, so to speak, and so over time, certainly, as, as people become more aware of the rate structure and, and, and understand the concept behind what we're trying to do, I think there needs to be a lot more public education on that, before you get to what you're saying, which ultimately can happen.
Yeah, if I could ask a follow-up question to that. Again, the, taking that same principle and thinking about perhaps the capacity use surcharge, I mean, I can see how, on the one hand, if it's, if it's surcharged, it's going to be based on the projected average daily flow of the new user, then right there, you sort of have the built-in incentive to the new user to maximize the efficiency of their,
of their new use, of their building.
But I'm wondering if we might not be able to think about, again, tiering that, so, because obviously, the point of new construction, design and new construction is, is always the hugest, that's where the opportunity is to, you know, set the, the usage rate for that building or all future occupants, you know, forever. That's when all the capital investment's happening. So I'm wondering if there might not be a way to tier that to the point to where you really incent and make it cost-effective for building owners, building developers, you know, to, to make the investments in efficiency at the building, things like rainwater collection, things like gray water reuse, you know, either you build that in when the building's built, or you don't do it. And if, and if it's not, and if the signal, if the price signal's not strong enough, then basically, they make a calculus, say, well, no, it's not worth it.
Yeah.
But, you know, if we could more powerfully incent that through the, through that user surcharge.
Yeah, one of the things that, in addition to that user surcharge, and I think this, this speaks to what you, you bring up, Counselor, is, is that we've also included the, the second meter or any sprinkling, you know, irrigation systems would be put into that larger block. So they, to put in an irrigation system now, you have to have a second meter, and it gets billed at that higher rate. So, you know, there are things that we're doing to that end that, you know, you have to think twice. We also, you know, we limit the hours that a sprinkler can go, we've increased the loam depth. So, you know, we're, we're looking at, at trying to, to deal with some of those, you know, extraneous uses that, that we feel we can charge more for.
And I think, again, it's going to take education, because many people utilize their irrigation systems in excess of what they need to utilize them. So we're going to need to do a combination of, of implementing this ordinance, plus a lot of education, so people understand the reasons behind what we're doing. And so I think it's going to, we can, to stay on this schedule, I'd like to try to get this ordinance in place. Doesn't mean that next year, or the year after, we can't change the ordinance, but I think it's been extremely complicated to put this ordinance together, to try to at least get moving and, and achieve this, this schedule. What Counselor Reynolds has said has a lot of merit, is, again, it's a combination of, of education and having this new system in place for a year or two, you know? I, I just think it's important.
Counselor Dwyer.
Oh, sorry.
Two different things, but building on that, and, you know, not having read the ordinance yet, obviously, does it make sense to have a provision in the ordinance that looks forward to various kinds of incentives that, that assumes that, or maybe it's already in there, Dave, that assumes that there may be different kinds of incentives that could be activated on a yearly basis as new technologies become available, you know, let alone we become better at understanding what those savings can be.
Want to speak to that, Dave?
Sure. Oh, certainly, yeah, and, you know, there are, you know, things, it's a, it's a rapidly evolving area, this, this, the conservation, the sustainability and, and water use. And one of the things that, you know, the ordinance typically is, is the, is kind of the big picture. One of the things that we're seeing is, we're working on the, you know, the zoning ordinances, the, the site review regulations, our, our own utility specifications, and a lot of those things get addressed in there. For example, well, we, you know, Peter just completed a study looking at water reuse from the, the PES water, wastewater treatment plant. As we go forward in, in our technical advisory committee, when a developer comes in and, and has a sprinkler system, you know, there, there are all sorts of studies that tell you that, you know, you, an inch a week is, is what you need. People typically over, overwater their irrigation system, so we're requiring that they put in moisture gauges and things like that, so that it's not, so that, you know, you drive around, and if you see a sprinkler system going on in, in the middle of a rainstorm, you realize that, you know, that's just wasted water. Well, we're trying to address those things on a, those really technical type of issues, both in technical advisory committee and through our, our site review regulations and our utility specifications.
Which are referred to in, from the ordinance?
Correct, yes.
To, to those.
Correct.
Sure, Counselor.
And then a second thing to build on Counselor Whitehouse, especially given this notion that using the multiplier is based on future capital improvements, how about the sewer side, and what might a time schedule be like, particularly the capacity use surcharge is associated with the sewer side? Because I think that's much on our minds, more on our minds than the water side.
Yeah. Sewer ordinance, a revision of the sewer ordinance is, is in the works right now also, so.
That would be very parallel in terms of like the capacity of surcharges.
Correct, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Couple of quick questions. One is, I think I know the answer, but to clarify, Counselor Reynolds had mentioned that perhaps in the future, as we identify sensitivity and that sort of thing, to get this much, if not exactly in its form, now on the books and then can modify with time, would it be in that, within the structure of changing fees or ordinance changes, if we were, for example, to add tiers down the line, from two to, say, more than two?
That, because that is a, that is a fee, that would be done, you know, each year as part of the fee schedule.
So additional tiers?
Correct.
Would it be the same strategies as if you were simply changing an existing fee?
Correct.
Okay.
Fee committee's getting stronger and stronger.
Oh, my, I'm sorry, everybody wants to be on it.
Now, the chairman's going to have that power.
Watch out, watch out. One other quick question, in terms of the multiplier, not being a novice on this topic, how is, how frequently is, how often is such a multiplier used in, say, other communities around here or nationally? Is that fairly common? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, and it's typically, I mean, we've actually come up with nomenclature for it, so that we have that in the ordinance. A lot of, a lot of communities don't even cover this in their ordinance, but it, it, this is a, this would be an industry standard. I mean, this, the methodology that we've used in here is one that was recommended by the consultant, and it's, it's one of the standard methods. We've just more or less put, put the, the language to it and put it in our, our water ordinance.
Okay. Let me go.
Let me go with Counselor Whitehouse, and then Counselor Dwyer.
You know, under, the impact on the budget process, and this bullet here kind of caught my eye, you know, under the ordinance, all water-related rates and fees will be elevated annually as part of the budget and fee committee process. Now, there are many people who budget monthly for their taxes, for their water and sewer bill. Now, has the, has there any thought been given on basing the, the fee increase relating to the tax increase? Suppose we go along and we have a tremendous tax increase one year, it'd be really helpful for the average household owner to say, "Well, I'm getting a tax increase, but my water rates are going to stay stable for this one year."
Let me speak to-
You know, that's just a thought.
Well, let me speak to the issue, because we wouldn't want to codify that, because I think that would become problematic, but we actually do pay attention to that. If you look at the history of taxes and water and sewer rates, you'll notice that we've tried to be sensitive to that. And, and it really comes down to the city council making that decision ultimately, but as a city staff, what we do is, we, we see if there is going to be a, a spike in the tax rate, what we try to do is, we try to be very cautious about the water and sewer rates. And so that, that really is-
Why couldn't that be part of the ordinance, built right in?
I don't know how you would do that. I, I don't know, I mean, unless you did a Prop 2.5 type of thing where you build in.
No, 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 no.
No, no, I'm just saying, I don't know how you would quantify that, that's all I'm saying. I mean, that really comes down to a policy decision.
You could have another bullet whereby, you know, if the tax rate increases a certain percentage, then the water rate for that one year does not.
Well-
That is sort, I mean, it has the elements of a Prop 2.5, where you'd be locking it in basically to a number.
Well, the other thing is, the other thing is, they are enterprise funds, I mean, technically, and they do stand on their own. So, for example, some communities have their own electrical utilities, for example. Some have, you know, you have water, you have sewer, so they really should stand on their own, because we have users that go beyond the city limits as well. We have retail customers. So, you know, you don't want to tie it to, to a situation where, specifically to taxes, but we're sensitive to that. I, I just, that's all I can say about it. I think if you look at it, we are.
The city council can either deny that raise or go along with that.
We, it sort of happens already. It's just a matter of whether or not it's codified or not, but that's, that's part of our responsibility.
Well, you vote on it anyway.
Right, I mean, we, we sort of decide that.
It's one of the six resolutions we voted on.
Right, absolutely, yeah.
And we voted at the same time, so that future councils be sensitive to the fact that, oh, oh, we're raising taxes.
As long as I've been here, we've always been very sensitive to that.
But the fee is set in the budget session, and the tax rate is set four or five months after, in October.
Well, well, the thing is, though, let me just speak to, the, the tax rate is pretty darn close, unless it's in a revale year, to what we predict. It's within five, five cents plus or minus, depending on what happens with overlay or something.
And the thing, and not, not to say things that we, we'll say much more often in the months to come, but focusing not so much on the tax rate, which is simply one variable that spits out, part of spitting out a final tax bill number, is try to keep cognizant of, say, what the tax bill would be on, say, a median home relative to a rate, say, for water, something like that. So, it's, it's in there, and every two years, people tell us whether or not we get it right. Counselor Dwyer?
Well, I think I know the answer to this now, given kind of the, the assumptions that are built into this, but, but is there such a concept as a tiered multiplier for different kinds of users? Or does that violate all these spirits of fairness that we've been looking at? Because I think, you know, that's really what's in people's minds about, can, would there be different kinds of multipliers used for different kinds of users that put different kinds of pressures on development?
I guess we could, we could take a look at that. Not familiar with it, but it's, you know.
Possible.
Sure.
Counselor Reynolds?
Another question here, I'm not sure whether it, it will relate to something that's actually in the ordinance, but it goes to the potential use of funds that we generate through, that would be generated through this capacity improvements multiplier. What I'm wondering is, if we might, if we have now, or if this is being conceived, or if we might not think about potential uses of the funds along the lines, I mean, it's a very similar concept, seems to me, that we have, that the parking impact fee. We charge money if people can't meet their own parking needs, we put it in a fund, the idea is we, in the future, fund things that will reduce the demand for parking. Could it, is it, or could it be one of the potential uses of funds that we, say, were to accumulate over a few years in the, in the, in this fund, to do things that were broadly about reducing demand, say, through the whole system, along the lines of the, the utility energy efficiency program?
They would have to be capital in nature.
Right, but-
And if they are, that would be just a function of council.
An idea, like, an example that I'm thinking of, let's say, how many, all of us kind of raising hand, how many were in your house, and everybody probably does this enforcement, you know, old houses, big houses, when you turn on your water to get hot in the morning, you, the water has to run for like forty-five seconds, a minute, to come to your tap, right? So all that water is water that's just running right through down the drain, we're all paying for it, we're paying for it in the capacity. There exists technology that can be installed in homes to have a recirculating pump under the sink that, you know, would prevent all that waste, you know, so that you wouldn't do that, you would turn it on and you would have hot water right away.
But isn't that a valve?
But, per household, it's about a $250 investment, so people don't tend not to do that. But what if, we, we calculated that, geez, if, if 50% of the homes in Portsmouth put this stuff in, we could, you know, the, the, the benefit to the system, the capacities reduction would be substantial, could we justify, say, a program where we would subsidize, you know, like the utilities do for the compact fluorescent lamps, where we would subsidize the installation of those systems in, in homes, such that, you know, people's bills would be reduced, no more waste of hot water, you know, all that water waiting for the hot, plus, we would have this reduction in the system capacity.
I, I think that's something that, right now, we have a big program going on, on water conservation with packets that we're sending out, and you might want to just speak to that briefly.
Can I recall that, yeah? So we are doing that kind of-
Yeah, so, I mean, yeah, it's at one level here, maybe ultimately you can get to another level. Yes, it's possible. It's just a matter of, right now, we're starting, you know, we're starting with the, the low-hanging fruit, if you will.
Right. Yeah, if I could add to that, just the, in talking to the finance department about that, you know, this whole calculation is based on our capital improvement plan. So, the intent of that money, and, and part of this defensible nature of this, is that that money, if somebody is paying additional money to get into the system, that that money is going for those improvements. Now, you know, I guess if you could put that portion of, you know, that demand reduction into a capital project, then you would be paying for that, but my accountant back there keeps us straight and narrow and says that money has to go to the projects that it's been assigned to. So, you know, at this point, I would see that money going back into those projects that are approved in the capital improvement plan.
But also, in the city of Portsmouth, you have in the code, in the plumbing code, that there has to be a certain valve in there that keeps that from bringing hot water up for quite some time. I know, because our hot water, before we did over our kitchen, used to be fast, and when we had the plumber come in, he put a valve in and said this was cold, and it now takes, like you say, two or three minutes, two minutes to get the hot water.
That's an interesting point, yeah.
So I presume it's a safety-related?
A safety-related issue.
Well, we have to check that. I mean, the concept is there.
I bring up the topic, yeah, the concept, I mean, what I, what I'm getting at is if, instead of one day we have to invest in developing another well, you know, if by doing this, over ten-year period, we could actually prevent ever having to open that well.
And again, we'll go right down the list of things that we feel are most effective that get the highest bang for the buck.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments?
I guess we were set to bring this before you on the 16th, so unless I hear objections, it will be there for the first reading. I won't bother to put it on your October 5th, like I typically do, to ask permission to come on the 16th. Unless I hear objections now, I'll bring it forward on October 16th.
I don't want to see another one of these.
I know.
You won't see it. You won't see it.
What you're saying.
Well, thank you, thank you both for the presentation, very, to the point, very, very informative, and I'll accept the motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there any, all those in favor? All those opposed?
And I know how-
Thanks very much.